Good morning, welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Hiberger. Just a reminder, just silence your cell phone, which I pretty much always think is put on just for me. And there is listening devices here if you need help, Craig or Carol could help you with that. That takes us to routine business. First, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from July 14th, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,124,923.90.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Commissioner Barth?
This week's bills include two increments of over $210,000 for armor, medical, and the jail. And those were not a weekly bill, those were monthly bills for a couple of months and included true-up stuff for that. But I see the auditor is here and he probably has even more information.
Well, I think you kind of, Bob Litz from the auditor's office, I think you kind of laid it out there. What you're looking at there is the month of, the first number, $202,122, or $122 is the May health cost that we had. And then the March, it's also the March true-up. Now, the normal number, our estimate is about somewhere north of $250,000, but that's the actual number. The second one is your June healthcare costs, that is the April true-up. And why they came in this order, I have no idea. I think the COVID situation kind of upset a lot of different things. And that's why you're seeing two of them in one month instead of regular.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding the bills?
Commissioner, let me just say, I appreciate the auditor coming up here because there are a lot of little things in these bills that the public needs to know that we all scrutinize. And additionally, these are costs of operating a jail and it's a huge amount.
It is, absolutely. Anything else?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so I think we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Then there are reports there that I'd commend for your approval, lots of really good information about the great work that the Mobile Crisis Team does and their high approval rating as well as the good work that's being done over at Human Services. That takes us to item five, which is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item six, abatements recommended for approval. Good morning, Chris, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chris Lella, Equalization. Yeah, before you today, we just have one abatement for Gary and Dawn Severson, it's parcel number 51299, for the 2019 property tax, the amount of $1,152.35. The situation with this property is it was a rental property along a floodplain area in the spring 2019 flooding that occurred, and it was damaged extensively to the point that the city would not issue a building permit to repair it. And also, if they did, the property needed to be raised two feet in elevation. So because of the damage, it forced him to essentially tear the property down. So we're recommending approval of this abatement.
Any questions?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. It takes us to notices and requests. First item is to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on August 18th, 2020 for a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license application.
Good morning, Olivia Larson with the Auditor's Office. This is just for approval to set the hearing date and publish the notice. We have received a malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license application from the new owner of Hucids.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments, questions? Commissioner Barth?
Olivia, so this is just wine and malt liquor and it's an annual thing, right? So they still don't have a liquor license though?
Correct. Right now, the county does not have any liquor licenses available.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. It takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today for public comment? Seeing no one. That takes us to item 10 into regular business. First item is a public hearing to consider a special event malt beverage license for KTT LLC DBA 212, The Boiling Point, for an event on August 2nd. Hi, Olivia.
Good morning, Olivia Larson with the Auditor's Office again. We received an special event application from 212, The Boiling Point, for Hucids Speedway for their event taking place on August 2nd. This is so that they can continue to have races until their annual gets taken care of, which you just previously approved the hearing for that. However, I will let you know that I received a call yesterday afternoon from a Sterling Nielsen with Woods Fuller who indicated that the applicant is interested in maybe changing the name of the retailer on the license. And we do have people here to discuss that with you. Because it was so late that I received the information, I couldn't change like the notice of hearing or anything like that. So I think that's going to be something that you'll have to decide.
All right, if the proponents are here, it's the opportunity to come forward and speak on this matter.
I'm sorry, I was outside, I didn't hear exactly what, they're looking at changing the name?
Yes, Sterling Nielsen called me and indicated that they wanted it to be MK Concessions instead of 212. If that's not the case, we can just move forward, but that was what was indicated to me.
Is that okay with you, Kyle?
Is Sterling Nielsen here today?
Who is Sterling Nielsen?
Does Sterling Nielsen represent one of you gentlemen? Okay, well, we just won't worry about that then, so. So if you just want to give us your name?
Doug Johnson, General Manager at Hucids Speedway, sorry.
All right. Did you have anything that you wanted to say about this application?
No, I think everything's fine.
Okay.
Ma'am Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I'm just happy to hear that Hucids is back in the saddle.
Yep.
Thank you, we're happy to be here.
All right, congratulations on that. Is there anyone here opposed to this application? This would be opportunity for anyone who's opposed to this application to speak. Not seeing a rush to the podium, so I guess you don't have to give a rebuttal. Any comments or questions from the commission?
Make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, congratulations. Good luck with your first race. All right, that takes us to item 11, which is also a public hearing. And a second reading to consider amendment number 20-02 to the subarea map for Cedar Ridge Planning Development District. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, your Planning Director. And today, we're having a public hearing and possible adoption of an ordinance amendment to the Cedar Ridge Plan Development. And for those of you and for the public, Cedar Ridge Plan Development is about one mile, more or less, north of Renner, off of, on the east side of Highway 115. And it is a planned development that was approved back in April of 2016, so about four years ago. It encompasses approximately 80 acres. And within that 80 acres, there's a mixed use. There are, there's three subareas, one subarea is a residential subarea, and two subareas are basically agricultural areas. There, excuse me, is an existing riding arena horse stable that's located in the middle of the development, and you can see that. And then there was, or there was approved for 16 residential building sites. And those building sites basically ringed that stable. And that was approved, as I said, four years ago. So the applicant has now brought in a request to change actually two items, two requests. One, one of the requests was to allow larger accessory structures. In the regulations for the subareas, it was specified within the subarea for the residences that they were limited to 1,200 square feet. And between 2016 and today, we, the county amended our zoning ordinance to allow for some larger buildings for the entire county. However, because this specifies 1,200 square feet, they are limited to that. So the ordinance, as it now stands, would allow for other, for everyone else to have 2,400 square feet. So they would like to have that ability to have a 2,400 square foot accessory building, like a detached garage or a shed. The second request is an increase in density, residential density. They would like to add six residential lots along the south side of one of the subareas, the area that is south of Cedar Ridge Place. You can see where those four lots end. They would just like to add six more lots extending to the east. This was heard before the Planning Commission at the June meeting. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request to allow the larger accessory structures up to whatever the current zoning ordinance allows. And then they recommended denial of the increased density. So they recommended denial of the request for the six additional residences to be added to the subarea for the residential development. I have a couple pictures that I can show you. So this, you know, so you can see, there are already a number of homes that are built. You can see the new homes, you can also see the riding arena in the middle. And as they have developed the subdivision and the development, or the planned development, they have constructed the roads. And the portions that are adjacent to the residences are hard surface, that was a question that I had heard. So let's move on to the, this shows you the different subareas, Subarea A, B, and C. Subarea A is basically the residential area. Subarea B is the stable pasture area, and Subarea C is an agricultural area. This is the, this is what the applicant has submitted for the proposed change to Subarea A. You can see the six lots that are hashed on the south side of Cedar Ridge Place. That's what the applicant is proposing. This shows you that Subarea A where the residences would be constructed. It, there's an existing shelter belt, you can see Cedar Ridge Place. This is the portion that's gravelled at this point, because at one point, that was, that is the driveway that led back to the applicant's original home site. But let's continue on and I'll, I think you can see, so this portion, you can see the road is paved. If you look in front of these new homes, the road is paved. This is the stable. Once again, this is now, this is on Pony Meadow Place or Court. But this, as it goes around the corner, this is some of the new homes on the north side of the development. And you can see the driveways are paved and the road is paved, it was newly paved. This is some of the homes and some of the nice horses that are out there. This is a scenic picture for everyone. But I'd be glad to answer, I'd be glad to answer any questions for you if you have any questions on what is being requested or any of the existing, or existing conditions out there.
Commissioner Karski?
Scott, Subarea C is currently allowed two single-family dwellings.
Yes.
So with this request, basically, we're just expanding A into C. Would C keep the two dwellings then?
Yes.
So there'd be, that remaining, what would that be, northeast corner would still be allowed two single-family dwellings?
Well, one of them, it would basically allow for one more residence to be constructed in that Subarea C. One of those covers the original house that was there. And you can see that in that corner there, there's a, there's a house. And that, that covers allowing that house to remain there. It's where the applicants originally lived.
I guess I didn't see the house.
It's in the, it's in that southeast corner.
Commissioner Hiberger?
One of the development, you gave us the conditions this morning, and one of them is the final development plan. And I'm just wondering what that final development plan looked like. I happened to listen to the 2016 commission meeting, which was over an hour long when we discussed this whole issue. And we were told at that time that this section was supposed to be a park and that that additional house that was going to be built, was going to be built, my understanding was in the corner of the, of subsection C, so it'd be in the top corner of your map.
Yes.
And that the rest of it was to remain for horses and miniature ponies. Somebody said cattle, somebody said goats. I just, I'm just curious, so we now went from putting a house up in subsection C way up in the corner to adding six more lots down where the park's supposed to be?
That's correct.
And I'm wondering what that final development plan said when it was submitted to us?
Well, the final development plan, if you want to go back one, Trish, or a couple there. This was the final development plan, which showed the Subarea C, Subarea A, B, and C. This was the final development plan, which showed the residential uses, the ag uses, which was, i.e. the park, open space. And then the center part was the stable pasture area for that existing business that was already out there.
So the parks disappeared?
Well, that's what, it is going to be changing that land use. I mean, that is, that is what we are discussing today, is whether we should change that land use of parks, open space, pasture, from that use to allowing six more residential units there. I mean, you've hit the nail on the head, that's the request. And that's what was the split decision by the Planning Commission. They didn't have any problem with allowing the larger buildings. But they had, they had issues with the adding six more residential lots, and that's why they recommended denial. I mean, that was their recommendation.
Are there questions for Scott at this time? Commissioner Hiberger?
I actually have another one. So in 2016, the South Dakota Department of Transportation was contacted and there was going to be no additional entrances to this place, according to the DOT at that point. And so I don't know whether that's been looked at again, or if, I don't know where you'd put another entrance to that.
They're not proposing another entrance. They only have the one existing entrance, which is Cedar Ridge Place. And that comes off, that, that's the road that accesses South Dakota Highway 115. And they're not proposing changing the road structure at all.
Commissioner Karski?
I'm going to go back to my first question, Scott. So we're adding six lots, but in reality, we're only adding five residences because one of them's already there. We're just going to be subdividing the one where it is?
No, they're adding six more lots. It's a total increase of six additional lots. So they would, they would have the six along the south edge, they, they're adding six along the south edge. That would still allow for the one lot that is located in the southeast corner of the loop, which is the, where the applicant now resides, or the, that was the existing house on the development five years ago. And then they're adding one as Commissioner Hiberger indicated, basically, and it allows for a home to be built in Subarea C. The applicant in 2016 had indicated that it would probably go in that northeast corner. But which, where it says, the big area that says Subarea C on the map, generally somewhere in that area. But they're not limited, they can put that anywhere, but that's originally what they indicated. They hadn't really nailed down where they would like to have that additional house. So it is allowed to be built basically anywhere in Subarea C, one additional house. And then they allowed for the house in, that the applicant's now living to stay there.
Can you point to me on the map where the home is existing in Subarea C?
It's in Subarea B, sorry, it's.
It's in the lower right-hand corner of Subarea B.
So basically, it's straight east.
Labeled existing house.
Yeah.
So there is no, currently are no homes in Subarea C?
No.
Okay, that was my question.
No, there are.
So it's zoned for, or are we permitted to, or that commission at the time permitted two homes in Subarea C? According to the uses permitted. Two, if you look at C1C.
If you listen, if you listen to the video, the way it was stated at that meeting, then that is what it says. But that two included that existing home.
Yeah, it does.
As one of those two.
It does.
But there is no home.
Yeah, there is, there's a home in B in the corner, and that is the one that, in the meeting, that's how it is stated.
That was the, that's the intent of the development, whether it's written that way or not, that.
Okay, I'm going by the way it's written, so, okay, okay, okay.
Other questions for Scott? Commissioner Barth?
Scott, do you happen to know off the top of your head, I'm sorry, are adjoining properties, do they have eligibility's left? So the property to the south, the property to the east. I know that the trailer development just north there worked a lot of magic to get eligibility's into that area over there.
Well, the area to the north, let me give you a little explanation. The area to the north is an existing mobile home park. It is already zoned rural residential. So they, by right, can go in there and subdivide that into one acre parcels. And I think that's about 80 acres that is north of that. So they, they don't really, they do not have building eligibility's, per se, assigned to that 80 acres to the north. They have, by right, they can go in there and divide it up into one acre parcels. Right now, it's an existing mobile home park. There, I have, there has been some discussion about redeveloping that into a residential development, but that has not come forth yet to the Planning Commission or to the county. But there has been some discussion about perhaps redeveloping that into a stick-built development instead of a mobile home park. The property to the, to the west of this development is.
Across the highway?
Is across the highway.
Yeah, that's floodplain, so they probably.
A lot of that's floodplain, but the portion, there are, if you drive up there, there are a number of new homes that have been built in that area. And those have been primarily eligibility's that were moved out of the floodplain to an area, and then they develop that into some residential development. I cannot tell you for certain if there are eligibility's to the south or to the east. I assume there may be, but we'd have to do some research on that.
I'm sorry to ambush you with that question.
Any other questions? All right, if there are no other questions at this time for Scott, this is a public hearing, so the proponent may speak if present. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Eric Willardson, Willardson on Engineering. I'm the applicant for the owners, Brad and Laura Wagner, they're here as well. They approached me a few months ago to look at the existing development and potentially expand on that. It's kind of a phase two. So we developed the, essentially, the ring road that kind of completes the loop. So from an engineering standpoint, from an emergency access standpoint, that's probably, makes some sense. Also, this would loop the rural water main system that serves the existing lots together, instead of having two dead ends. Minnehaha County rural water is certainly in favor of that, looping that together. We don't see this as causing any kind of drainage issues for surrounding areas by changing this from essentially the pasture to rural residential. This area was purposely, and I think they'll expand on this a little bit, was purposely left out of the first part because they actually bored horses in that pasture area. There's, as you saw in the pictures, there's certainly screening along the south side from anything, any of the other properties. So from an engineering standpoint, it seemed to make sense to expand the development. As Scott indicated, we're not asking for additional accesses for DOT. The traffic impact with five or six additional lots is essentially minimal. And it's actually a trade-off from the people that were pasturing their horses in that land, coming and going, to the residents, coming and going. So I guess from that aspect, it seemed like a logical expansion of this. So with that, I'll let them explain their ends of things. But if you have any questions from an engineering nature as to drainage or services, obviously, it's rural residential, it'll still be onsite septic systems for the additional lots. But the property's way up out of the floodplain shouldn't be any, any problems. Haven't had problems with any of the other lots for percolation testing and onsite systems. So don't see any problems with that. With that, I guess I'd answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
Eric, as you know, one of my questions when I was at the Planning Commission was about septic systems and stuff. And I recognize that many of them work wonderfully. But it is perched on the hill right above the water supply for the city of Sioux Falls. And what about hooking up to the Renner Sanitary District? And there's that, again, that mobile home park with at least 30 mobile homes. I think it would be to the county's benefit to have it all be taken to a treatment facility instead of slowly leaching down the hill into the aquifer and the river.
And I know, Mr. Barth, you're, you're not an engineer, you don't understand how, maybe you don't understand how a septic system works. They don't just leach away downstream. Onsite septic systems are perfectly fine and ecological way to treat wastewater. Obviously, they are widespread in a rural state such as South Dakota. There are numerous statutes, laws, the rules that govern these. As you know, Lincoln County requires a professional engineer design these systems. I promoted that at Minnehaha County level and it's not gone anywhere. I would, as an engineer, think that that's an option that maybe you should look at. And I know I'm going off on a different subject, but it is onsite sanitary wastewater treatment. And while wastewater treatment plants are designed by professional engineers, I think onsite systems should be too. Something you may want to take a look at. But no, this, this area, the proximity to the floodplain makes absolutely no difference. To my knowledge, I've never heard of an onsite septic system ever contaminating an aquifer. There've been some that have maybe contaminated some lakes with the concentrations around, with cabins around the lake, but not in this situation. And I don't see any, any problems to continue. Not in this situation and and I don't see any any problems to continue with what has been a standard practice for hundreds of years.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, if not.
Thank you very much.
Was there anybody else that wanted to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Dave Edwards. I'm an attorney with Hagan, Wilkin Archer here in Sioux Falls. And I've been helping the Wagner's with this project from the beginning and then to do the covenants and to to form the HOA, which is operational. Laura Wagner has been in the horse business for about forty years. And currently, the the stable area in the subarea B is where the stable is. And. If if you had followed any of the introductions previously, the Wagner's are very active in the Renner community. They help organize Renner days, which benefits the Renner Fire Rescue and other charitable causes. In two thousand and three, as Scott mentioned, the the Wagner's built their home, which is in that. Lower right hand corner of the subarea B. I think it's actually a carve out now of subarea C, but nevertheless, that's where they lived. And they they decided to start off with this project, knowing that north of them is the mobile home park that Scott mentioned. We think it's actually fifty seven acres, not eighty, but regardless, it is a dense area north of them. And then immediately north of there is Rock Ridge and there's also forty homes up there, which is a more dense area. And there are also dozens of homes south of the Wagner's closer to the Renner corner. So in two thousand and sixteen, the Wagner's plan with this eighty acres was to form an equestrian community. It's somewhat unique in this area. They have no desire to build eighty one acre parcels or fifty seven or forty one acre parcels. They they want to maintain the equestrian spacious feel of this community. The site itself, the pictures may not do it justice. There's a shelter belt surrounding the parcel. With over three thousand trees that was planted by the previous owner decades ago that it's several trees deep. And is very mature and very well laid out, so it is a very peaceful setting. As you can see by the pictures of the horses, those aren't going anywhere. That is still the plan even with the additional lots. One thing that hasn't been mentioned yet is that Renner, as part of the comprehensive plan for the county, is a growth area. It's stated specifically that this where the Wagner's land is, that's in one of the outlined development corridors. And the plan specifically says that Renner should encourage growth. We did a little research on what's available in Renner these days and based upon some basic internet searches, it appears there's only about two houses for sale. So there is a shortage of homes in this Renner area. As Scott mentioned, the original plan was sixteen lots. And when you look at the outline, you can kind of see that it doesn't appear complete. The road would stop at the end, at the west end or excuse me, the east end of subarea A. So those residents would go to their lot and then come back as well as school buses. So you've got this entire stretch on the south end.
So I have a question about that because it looks to me like in the in the development plan that the that the road was put in as a loop. Am I missing something?
It is not.
In the plan that Scott put as the existing site plan, the road's shown as a loop, right?
Then couldn't construct that as a loop? It has not been.
But that's what it was originally stated. That's how it was originally submitted, that site plan is originally submitted shows that as a loop.
Madam Chair, a point of information they need to come to the mic to.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Sorry. No, I think that was like I said, that that concept plan has always been kind of part of it. This kind of my take on it is this kind of finishes that out. There was never a requirement to construct the road by fire or emergency vehicles or or anything. But it certainly was permissible. This would almost assure that it would be done.
I would disagree with that because that's the original site plan, that that road has to be completed and that is what we voted on four years ago, that that road has to be completed. And that was part of our discussion as far as we had one access. And if you think about the Hartford one we had several years ago that we did not approve because there was only one access to that place. This is supposed to be a complete loop for emergency and snow removal and multiple other things. And so that's the original site plan. I think you could ask Scott, but I think he'd agree with me.
I think the access issue is to the highway. And there is still is only one access and it doesn't require a second access until you exceed a predetermined amount of of units.
I think we'll ask Scott Anderson to come forward and talk about his understanding of what the legal significance of a site plan is. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. The the original site plan, which was submitted in two thousand and sixteen. Shows a looped road going all the way around the development and that what was that's what was approved. So this is the plan that was approved. It shows a looped road. I don't it doesn't it there's not a condition that it says you have to construct a looped road because it shows it on the site plan, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Scott, just looking at this image, it it looks like it shows a dead end public access. Little bit strip that actually heads south towards two fifty seventh street. Is that right?
That's correct.
So potentially at some point, there could be an access to two fifty seventh street.
Well, I think that that was included in the site plan because if there was ever any development further to the south. There was a a option for interconnecting roadways. So you could connect with the other subdivision and if there was a subdivision to the south, it's just good planning to allow to plan for. A more unified road network.
Okay, thank you. That helps clear that up. Any other questions about that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I recognize that we're socially distancing, but I wonder if we could have a couple of chairs for the proponent and their party to sit together, maybe by that screen over there.
Yeah, actually, I see a couple of people who aren't speaking yet that have cleared a couple of chairs over there if you wanted any. Okay. All right, Mr. Edwards, sorry.
Thank you. So with regard to the road, it is paved where the houses are now. And there isn't further progress on that area at the time being. So the subarea B, as we've already discussed, you've heard. The purpose of subarea B was for the arena and the stable and the horse pasture and the boarding operation. There is no plan for homes in subarea B other than the one that already exists. And that was one of the concerns of Mr. Anderson initially was, well, if these folks come back now with adding more homes to complete the semi circle. What's preventing them from coming back another year from now and wanting fifteen or sixteen in the middle? Well, that's clearly not a consistent approach to what we're asking for today.
Mr. Edwards, couldn't you say it's not consistent with what they asked for four years ago, what you're asking for today under that theory?
Well, I well, that's a good question, but when you look at the bird's eye view of this development and you've heard Mr. Willardson say. We can have the the water lines loop. We can have the bus routes loop and we can just add houses to what appears to be an incomplete development. So I mean, to me, it it is completing a semi circle rather than adding anything unusual like fifteen houses right in the middle. When these folks have purchased lots and have built houses, they are expecting the horse stable in the middle in some pasture area. With regard to the subarea C, there's a question about the park. That is still in the in the plans. There's a pond that is in the middle of subarea C and that pond would allow would there would be access for the residents to use that pond. And there would still be some horse activity and, you know, ponies and perhaps goats and in that pasture area in subarea C. So that is still part of the plan. The development has been a success. There's no residents in opposition to this. We've gone through three stages of plating and three stages of covenants. I've had zero feedback from any of the residents from the time they've looked at the lots or purchased the lots or the time that we've recorded covenants. So by all accounts, it's been a tremendous success and adding the additional strip of lots. It it is consistent with the looped road and with regard to safety concerns, you wouldn't have to have a school bus turning around. And it would all be consistent in that regard. The other thing that we didn't mention previously was the tax effect of this development. The Wagner's, when they purchased their property and just recently before the development, their taxes were less than seven thousand dollars on the entire eighty acres. Once this proposed amendment may be passed in adding the lots. The tax base will be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars based upon what I know about. The average taxes on these homes and doing some some rough math. And so with regard to the comprehensive plan, allowing for Renner as a growth area and encouraging it and increasing the tax base. We think those are primary considerations that really haven't been questioned by the planning commission or Mr. Anderson, but those are important items. Are there any other questions?
Commissioner Karski?
Of the sixteen lots, how many are sold and have homes on them right now?
I'll get that answer for you.
Well, thirteen are sold. We have two for sale.
Okay.
And they're encouraging us to construct it.
So thirteen have been sold and there's two for sale. Okay, okay, thank you.
And of the new lots, two of them are earmarked already. The Wagner's have a son who has a young family and that's the plan is that he will be in one of the lots. He's an officer on the HOA and he's very involved. And then the other one would be planned for their barn manager. The current manager's been with the Wagner's for seventeen years and we suspect that if the business, you know, she'll she'll stay with the business whether as a manager or potentially a future owner. So of the new lots, two of them may already be earmarked.
Commissioner Benega?
Mr. Edwards, has there been any conversation with the city of Renner about if in fact when this is developed? Are they going to require water and sewer be provided and are they going to require access from a fire department, all that good stuff?
I have not heard of anything different than what Mr. Willardson stated, that that they that the the officials would be in favor of a looped system for water. I don't believe that there's been any discussion with regard to sewer.
So they have a comprehensive plan, but it doesn't go into detail about what they're going to require?
Not to my knowledge.
Is that correct? Well.
To the mic, please, sorry.
There there is no city of Renner. I mean, Renner's an unincorporated village. Yeah, it's an unincorporated village, so I have spoken to the fire chief up there. And with our pond, if we have some access, he thinks they can draft water from the pond. In case there's fires on our place or north of us, a lot quicker to get there than to go to seventy seconds street. But no, there'd be no requirement. Actually, our township would appreciate this completed because they get more revenue. And if we ever do hire the township to move snow, they won't move it without the completed road.
Mr. Edwards, if you could just and if you could just identify yourself and your address, that would be great.
Four seven five three four Cedar Ridge Place.
Other questions?
Madam Chair?
No.
Look.
Go ahead.
So what about the next ask? I mean, we've gone four years.
There won't be another ask.
So let's say that into the microphone.
You kind of told us that the last time, so that's it's hard to.
We did. Actually, to be real fair with you guys, this was my original plan. And I went and talked to the planning department. I think Kevin spoke to Kevin. I had a rough drawing and boy, that's a lot of lots. I talked to Eric. Boy, that's a lot of lots. So we cut out this this part over here. But if you look at it, it seems incomplete with the roads as they are. Paving and constructing the roads is very expensive, so we're going to use some of the revenue for the new lots to complete the roads. Now, we could put gravel roads in. We'd be under no obligation to pave them. But I'm under no obligation to let anybody use them. I mean, it's my property and I wouldn't have to let anybody use them. So I think this is a cleaner way to do it and have it dedicated to public use.
Commissioner Heiberg?
I I just I beg to differ because according to the final plan, you have to complete the road. You maybe don't have to pave it, but you do have to complete it. Because that's what we voted on and we also did not vote, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, we can't go back four years and say how we would have voted. But I wonder if there would have been a whole lot more discussion if we would have put another six lots on at that time. Because there was a ton of discussion on whether we should give the additional lot for your home to go into.
Right.
Sub 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 area C, so and you figure every single lot that we approve, and I agree, it would go back into roads and stuff. But we're basically handing you and it's not building eligibility, but we're basically handing you, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars for each additional lot.
And in turn, we're handing the county a hundred thousand in taxes.
Yeah, and that that was actually brought up last time.
Actually, actually, there's two lots for sale besides our development in in Mapleton Township. What's a good number? I mean, we need more of these. We don't need less of this. We need more of this in the rural areas. Maybe we wouldn't have to raise taxes next year, you know. We need more of this kind of.
We didn't raise taxes this year, but I think that it's important that the road is the road really isn't part of the discussion because the road already has to be completed. That's already been voted on. That's really not part of the subject because the road already has to be completed.
Well, we will we will complete the road, but I won't pave it and I won't provide access, you know, public access for it.
I'd like to ask Scott that question.
Sure. The road is to be completed at some time. It needs to be completed and it'll need to be paved. And I think I need to I I really think I need to help educate the public and the audience. About taxation and I'm not the auditor or the treasurer, but when you get a hundred thousand dollars in gross tax revenue, that that does not all go to the county. As you know, the majority of that goes to the school district. It's not like we're getting a hundred thousand dollars in cash. It's there's a portion that goes to the school district. There's a portion that goes to the township. There's a portion that goes to the county. There's a many, many taxing entities that get part of that hundred thousand dollars of gross revenue.
And we are at the bottom of that graph.
I'm Laura Wagner, four seven five three four Cedar Ridge Place. I'm also the resident there. And I I'm I'm going to explain. But that right now, those are pasture horses that don't go into the barn at night. And as we're getting older, we I have a barn manager that does a lot of the the stable stuff. But we still feed these horses round bales in the winter. We have to buy a hundred and twenty round bales. We store them out there. It'd be nice to not have to do that. I'd like to make the middle part really pristine. We're going to be eliminating the pasture horses. Then we can take down those fences. People have access to that back area where I'm going to move my miniature horses, my goats. We have a lot of little kids. They can go back there and pet them, play with them. They walk every day to see them. It's going to be nice. Our son will live there and help with this. It's it's just going to make it a nicer neighborhood. It's a beautiful view. It doesn't affect. The integrity of the property for any of the other people that live there. It's still going to be super nice. It's great neighbors. When we first did this, we didn't do all this because there was some concern because nothing like this has been done before. And we wanted to make sure it was going to work. We were going to like it. Is it going to still have the feel we want it to? This is my passion. This isn't some fly by night thing I did. This is a beautiful barn, so it's not a three sided shed. And that I think it's just going to add to the property. It's not going to be detrimental. I mean, it's nice. We love it. We love the community. We want it better. It's not and those horses are going to move anyway and that's going to allow us to, you know, make it nicer and more access to that property for the people that already live there. And I hope you've driven out there and seen it because it's beautiful.
Yeah, it is a beautiful area. Thank you. It is a beautiful area. So I would like to, we haven't had anybody for the proponents speak. If you have, if there's somebody from the proponents that has something to say that hasn't been said already, you're welcome to come and speak. Otherwise, I'm going to move to the opposition. Okay. Is there anyone here who is opposed to this proposal? That would like to come forward and speak? Okay, not hearing anyone. All right, so that takes us, no rebuttal then, I guess. So takes us to the commission. Thoughts?
I have a couple of questions for Scott if I might.
Okay.
I think Scott went down, here he comes.
Hi, Scott.
Went down the hall. You're up, Scott.
What kind of questions do you have?
Scott, right here. I fully agree that this road needs to be completed all the way around. It's part of the requirement for Sub Area A. It is a private road.
Yeah.
I mean, it specifically states in there that subdivision roads shall be private. So it's a private road. Where is the requirement come from to be paved?
It comes from a different section. I believe it's in Article 10 of, or 12 of the zoning ordinance.
So it's our zoning ordinance?
It's already our zoning ordinance. When you have a road that comes off a paved road, it's required to be paved.
Okay, okay. And that makes sense. Now, is there a requirement that any of these homes be stick-built or site-built homes?
Not.
Put a mobile home out there, is my question.
It, there's a yes and a no to that. The no is it's not specifically identified in the sub-area requirements, which I handed out to you, but it may be a requirement of their HOA, their covenants. So it may be a requirement of their covenants that they've placed on the property.
They can change their covenants by a simple vote of the members, but there's nothing in the development or inside the stipulations that we put on here that says that they have to be a site or stick-built home. Okay, okay. So they could put whatever they'd want to out there.
They could bring a moved-on home. They would have to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance and there are specific requirements about manufactured homes having to have foundations and certain size requirements.
Okay, okay. I thought I had one more. I guess my emphasis is going to be that this road needs to be completed. It was part of the site plan that was submitted and it needs to be done. And I think it makes sense whether these additional six properties are completed or not. I was not on the commission, but I was sitting out there when this was being proposed four years ago and I found, it was one of my first exposures to this process and I found it quite interesting. And I frankly am not surprised that they're back. I mean, they're back because it's been successful. And if it wasn't successful, they would have no need to have six more lots out there. To think that a plan is going to sit like it's proposed and sit there forever without ever being changed, it doesn't matter if it's a business plan or any sort of zoning plan within a municipal area. I've seen it so many times over the last nine years. People buy a house, well, I thought it would never change. Well, it's going to change. I mean, I get that and I understand that. But it's up to us to make sure that the rules are very black and white and that they're followed. So I mean, I'm going to tell you, complete the road. So, thank you.
Commissioner Barth.
In response to Commissioner Karski, it was before my time, but I heard Jim Zweeb say this, that they had a subdivision that begged not to pave their road going onto the county highway. And gravel roads or gravel driveways going out onto a paved road drag gravel out there and stuff. And so the commission said, well, there are only two houses built in the subdivision. We'll let you guys go. So later on, all the houses were built and they came to the commission and said, why the hell haven't you paved our drive? So it was our fault that their drive wasn't paved because we let them slide the first time. And I just, it's an anecdotal thing that I'm way too full of. But I think that clearly is an item here. But I kind of think about this also is, you know, what's the best use of this land? You know, we're not going to grow soybeans or marijuana on this property, I hope. But it's not going to be all pasture. So what is the best use of this land? And it is a growing area. I don't believe in 50 years, you will see cattle along the road to Dell Rapids. I mean, there's probably going to be a McDonald's followed by Walmart followed by a pawn shop and a church or something. And so I do have other concerns though, as you heard. I mean, I worry about the, taking care of the utilities, whether it's sewage or water. And then I also have a little bit of a quibble and maybe, Scott, you can help me, but how could they sell these lots before it was approved for development?
I don't think the applicants indicated they'd sold them. I think they said they were spoken for, which I think they mean they, you know, have just said that they have people that are interested or that they're, if this goes through, that would happen, so.
Thank you.
All right, thoughts? Commissioner Heiburger.
I think we're getting close to making a motion, but I can't support this. Laura, you made a great, I don't know where she is, I can't see her, but you did a passionate. And I mean, I get it. And you about swayed my vote, but I think I'm still going to vote against it. I'm, the road hasn't been completed. This was not what was brought to us in the beginning. We had a huge, long discussion about this whole extra section and, you know, and maybe at some point, this will end up being developed. I don't think we're there right now. I do have concerns a little bit about utilities going out there. I have more of a concern about the road issue that isn't completed and.
Yeah, I mean, this is really, I think, an opportunity for the commission to talk. Did you ask a question to Laura that you'd like her to respond to?
Okay, I'm sorry. But I didn't know if you understood that. That is our plan. We live there. We want the road.
Yeah, I understand that they want to complete.
Jeff's, the perk test.
I'm sorry, this is not.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you had your chance.
Okay.
Yeah, no, Laura, you did a great job of explaining and maybe I'll be there at some point. At this point, I'm still not there after listening to yesterday's and the planning zone, the planning committee from the Monday night meeting, they voted against us for several different reasons. And I'm just going to stick with what they say. Last time we went against them, they voted, I think it was completely against it in 16. Four to two in 16? I think in 16, they were all opposed to it. I could be wrong. It's, and it was two, it was four to two. And it's, I think it was the same this time too. But I'm going to stick with the planning department this time and say no to the additional six lots at this point.
Commissioner Barth.
Ma'am Chair, I think, you know, one thing about this is, this is our opportunity to put other conditions on this project if we chose to. So, you know, we're already making the change on the outbuildings going from 1,200 to 2,400. By the way, Dell Rapids thinks it should be 5,000 feet. But, so are there other conditions that we would want to put in the record at this point for if this project were to come back again? And Commissioner Heiburger, is there something that would make you feel more comfortable?
I haven't thought about that, Jeff.
Commissioner Benega.
Well, I don't think you can control change. Unfortunately, you can slow it down a little bit and this whole development's going to change. I'm one of those people that probably thinks that within four years, we're going to have another change coming about. It may not be with a Wagner development, but it probably will be with a mobile home development because it's just part of the growth opportunities that developers will see. And I think if we try to slow down positive development, that's a negative to the region, if you will. The other piece of this is I do think that we have to, as Commissioner Karski said, I think we have to develop or put in the development arrangement that it has to be paved. I'm still concerned about utilities, whether it's encompassed or not with the community of Renner because Renner's got its own set of issues that they seem to always be facing with flooding and all that kind of stuff. It's never a problem until it is a problem. And I don't want people to have sewer backups, all those kinds of issues because we made a development issue currently. So reluctantly, I will support that, but I am going to ask for a few responsible changes to that, including the pavement.
Commissioner Karski.
Sure. You know, going from 1,200 to 2,400 square feet, that's kind of done. Yeah, no problem. That just fits with the rest of our zoning laws. And I'm in favor of the additional lots. And when you look at it, it makes sense. It's part of it. You didn't get it the first time. You asked for what you think you can get and then if you have to come back, you ask for more. But, and if we say no, we say no. And if we say yes, well, to me, it works. It looks fine. I'm not an engineer. I don't know how septic systems work or drain fields and all that stuff. So I'll take the word of an engineer or, and believe that what they're telling us is true. I'm in favor of both changes. I do prefer, as Commissioner Barth said, when you come to us and you ask us to make changes to these things, you're opening it up where we can add additional conditions to make this work and a paved road and either site or stick-built homes that have a foundation is what I would prefer to see out here.
That's in our covenants.
That's in your covenants, okay.
Yeah, you guys have to talk at the mic. I'm sorry. I can't ask you that again, so.
Yeah, what you're saying is what, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, go ahead.
Yeah. You're saying what you're requiring already, what I'm asking for or saying would be a good condition for this development. So I would be in favor of basically under Sub Area A to list that the homes have to be site or placed on a foundation, I guess would probably be the proper way to word it. Scott?
I'd ask Scott to come forward and maybe address some of these additional requirements that are being talked about.
Your question, it would be.
The proper wording, do you call it a site-built or stick-built? Or do you say the home has to be placed on a foundation? What's a proper way to address that within the conditions?
I would probably prefer that you say they're constructed on-site. If that's what you want, site-built.
I mean, if somebody wanted to build a custom touch home out of Madison and bring it in and put it on a foundation, I would hate to preclude that type of thing, not to advertise for anybody, but.
I think maybe, I think maybe we're going down a path that we don't really need to go down because it's already in their covenants. I don't think that, I think that we should let them have the latitude. If we say they have to be constructed on-site, then you're correct. We are cutting out someone like a custom home that could be built or brought in from Madison. Or maybe there's a beautiful house here in the flood plain that needed to be moved out. That is a beautiful stick-built home. I think if they have an active HOA, a homeowners association, and they are actively reviewing those plans, we should let them have the latitude to decide what they want to put on their, in their subdivision. So I don't think that's really as important as if you want to add a condition that says, just to spell it out, the looped road has to be completed and hard-surfaced. I mean.
Just like I trust an engineer and their opinion, I'll trust yours too. You're the expert there, Scott.
Wait a minute, Scott. So are there any other restrictions or suggestions you think we should consider?
Well, I, I don't know. You know, the issue about this looks complete and, yes, I can see that, you know, lots fit nicely on the south side of Cedar Ridge Place. But I also could make lots fit nicely along the rest of the perimeters of this property where it says Sub Area C. I could put in a beautiful cul-de-sac there and you could have eight more lots. I mean.
And if they want to come to us.
And that may be. And that's why we have, and that is why we have all of, we have a public hearing and public input because there's a lot of discussion that goes into this. And Commissioner Heiburger talked about the original plan development. Well, there was a lot of discussion that went into that. I had recommended approval. I didn't have an issue with the proposal as it was presented to us. And then it went to the planning commission and they recommended denial. And that's part of the entire process where we have various schools of thought. Just because I'm proposing something or recommending something may not be what eventually happens based on public comments, public input, hearings at this board and the planning commission. So I'm okay. I mean, we will make it work, however, whatever you decide to do. And it may, it may come back in five or 10 or 20 years that this, there's going to be changes. I, I'm drawing a little bit on past experience and I didn't bring this up because I didn't know if it was actually relevant, but I did exactly one of these in Rapid City in Pennington County. Horse boarding arena center in the middle of a development. And it was on the south edge of town by the water slide and it went bankrupt and they ended up redeveloping the entire center part into residences. So things change and you adapt and you move on based on those changes.
Scott, maybe you shouldn't leave because I know I have a question for you, but I'll let Commissioner Heiburger go first.
One of the things that was brought up was the Renner Future Development Corridor. And so how does this actually fit into the Renner, that area corridor? If the planning commission already said that, or whatever, you guys said it wasn't right. I get all those names mixed up.
Well, I mean, I don't think there's a, I think that there's just a general concept of a Renner corridor. You know, I mean, eventually, there's going to be, as Jeff indicated, whether that's 50 years or 20 years, I mean, we are going to see more development pressure along that corridor that runs on 115 between Sioux Falls and Dell Rapids. I mean, it is going to happen sooner or later. But, you know, does this fit into it? I think it's appropriate and I thought it was appropriate four years ago. That's why I had recommended approval initially of the plan development. Does that answer your question?
But now you're not, but now you're not recommending it because of the increases of the traffic coming out of the driveway? Or this density zoning?
It's, it's more the, why I'm not recommending approval now is because I'm more concerned about the precedent. Because once, once you say yes now, how are you going to say not, how are you, what will the precedent be in five or 10 years when potentially you could have Sub Area B, the entire center of that wanting to be developed? And I respect the Wagner's, you know, opinion or their plan that they have no intention of doing that, but that's, we, our plans all change and we're not the sole proprietor or the caretaker of land forever. And so eventually, that, there will be someone else in charge or owning that property and maybe that'll be 40 years from now, but plans change. And I respect, I mean, certainly Commissioner Karski's statement is true. Plans change. So we just have to decide now whether we want this plan to change.
So Scott, I'm wondering that if we do approve this, we do require that the looped road be paved, could we also clarify that in Sub Area C, that there's only one single-family dwelling there? Since that was the intent, from what I understand originally, that there would be one there and that the existing house counted as one.
Yeah, we can add that in there, just to clarify it.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I just want to clarify what you said because I know this was very confusing before. So you would take away that additional one and that the one that's in B would be the one that was allowed in C? And so they would only get an addition? That's where I'm confused again.
What we can just do, I think what would be easier, we just, we would just change the boundaries to go around the house and include that to C and you are, we are okay then. That's probably the easiest.
Clarification.
Commissioner Heiburger.
So then it would be those six and then that one that was there before, so the existing house would be number seven and then there'd still be one more, so there would still be eight.
And can we accomplish all that today without drawings that show that? We just. We just put in the record that that's what our intent is?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I will have to say that I am in favor of adding the additional lots. It's very compelling to me that there was no one in this development that came to oppose this either before the planning and zoning or today, that there was, that they are fine with this. I do agree that things change, that there is a high demand for these kind of lots out in the rural area, and this is a better place to put those lots than in, you know, in the middle of, right smack dab in the middle of a bunch of egg land. So I think this makes more sense. And, you know, it is troubling to me that you guys didn't comply with the site plan that was approved four years later. It's, you know, it's troubling that you're back. You know, if I had my druthers, I'd like to say that you, you know, subarea C, other than the housing, is going to be open, and you're going to actually do the goats and the things that you said you were going to do last time that you still really haven't done. So, I mean, if that's amenable as a condition, then I would, I would add that as well so that it's clear that what gets said here is what actually gets done, as opposed to what gets said here just goes in the minutes later. And so those would be my thoughts on this. And I think, Commissioner Barth, if you had something to say, otherwise I think we're ready for a motion.
I was just going to ask if the proponents would acquiesce to that condition at the podium, so we have it on record.
One of the proponents like to come forward? Thank you. Now I'll let you talk, since you got specially invited. Sorry, I was.
All I think about is where I'm going to put my goats and stuff back there. And I mean, that's going to happen. I'm, I want to let a winter go so I know where the snow is, where I build their barn. We're going to put a game camera, make sure coyotes can't get them. I might have to lock them in at night. It's a plan. We do a lot of projects. There's a lot going on. This has always been my plan to move them back there and get the pond nice. It's a lot of work. We got, you know, we got, well, Eric left, but we got to get Eric and Jason, and, you know, it's a lot of work to do. And it's, it will happen. It's my dream.
So Mrs. Wagner, are you willing to agree to paving that other section of the loop?
That's our plan. We live there. We like paved roads, too.
Thank you.
Yes, sure. I'm still going to vote against it, but no, no hard feelings. I mean, I just, I think what you're doing is beautiful. I just, I just think that this is, I have, I have my own reasons. I just, I feel like this is probably, should not have gone forward. I do not, I'm glad they're voting for it, if that's what they think is important, and it will be a beautiful place. It is. I've driven by myself, so. Stop next time and say. Okay. Thanks, Laura.
So how do we make this motion?
Well, I think at planning, they made two separate motions, and they were taking two separate actions, but I still think it makes sense to make two separate motions just to try to keep it as clear as possible. So I take one motion, the changing the size of the outbuildings, and then we'll do a separate.
I would make a motion to bring the accessory building dimensions into compliance with the county ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is that clear enough for you, Olivia? Or does somebody need, do we need to clarify that?
To make it apply to the county ordinance, if I may, I mean, if ordinance changes, can they change? I mean, so if we do go to 5,000, they go to 5,000? I mean.
Well, I think that would make sense, too.
Scott's coming here to help us.
So I have prepared an ordinance for you, and I have given it to Olivia. And the way that that's worded, I need to get my reading glasses on here, is it says that, it would be to allow Cedar Ridge Plan Development, to allow them, to allow accessory structures in subarea A to follow the total permissible area of accessory buildings as shown in Table 4 of Article 12.7.
That takes care of it.
So that way, if it does change in the future, it's tagged, it's referred back to what we're allowing for other, other similar developments in the county.
So that was your motion, Commissioner Barth?
Yes, ma'am.
And we had a second, I believe? So a motion and a second. I'll do a roll call vote on that.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger? Aye. Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously, and I'm hoping Scott's going to bail us out on the next motion.
Yep. And the next one would be to add six single-family residential lots to subarea A from subarea C on property, on, in the Cedar Ridge development, so.
What about moving that other little spot?
We'll maybe do that as a third motion, because that, that didn't really come up at the planning commission, so we could do a third motion that, and that one I probably will have to think a little bit harder on.
Don't hurt yourself.
You probably have like five minutes, maybe two minutes to think about that. So is somebody willing to make that your motion?
Aye.
Commissioner? Karski, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
No.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Motion number three.
I think motion number three is we specify the Wagner's address, and I'm not sure what that address is. They can rattle it off, that that area be identified as subarea C.
I think they're already.
We'll just put it in the motion, put it in the minutes that way, so.
Just to alleviate the confusion that we had this time.
That'd be my motion.
Second. The motion and a second. Do we need to say anything about paving the road?
It's already a requirement.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Is there?
It's not a requirement specifically.
It's not a requirement in the subs, in the standards and the requirements. It's a, it's a, it's a, it is a requirement of the zoning ordinance. It doesn't need to be specified within the, in the area regulations. It's already a requirement.
It's not a condition, it's an ordinance.
It's already a condition of the zoning ordinance.
Is there any timeframe for at least completing the loop that even if it's not, because I'm just, you know, it could be a requirement and then sits out there. It's already sat out there four years at least. There should be a completion of the gravel loop so that, so that fire trucks can get around.
That would be, that would be, that could be an addition, if you felt it was appropriate, to specify that the looped road be done by a certain time.
Okay, well, let's do this, we'll do a fourth motion then. So now I've lost track. Did we have a motion and a second on motion number three? Okay, that's what I thought. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I would give the applicants a chance to weigh in on a timeframe if you guys are, you guys, somebody needs to come to the mic, though. Thank you.
I mean, we're going to do it, but you do, we have to take down fencing. I have to give these people some time to move the horses that are in the pasture. It changes some things there. So I mean, it can't be like it can't happen overnight. I don't know how long it takes, but.
The next year? Yeah, I was just like, do you need a year or two?
Probably a couple of years.
That's what I was trying to get, a timeframe.
Yeah.
Two years from next spring. We're going to build the road next spring, so then.
Two and a half years.
Yeah.
Is that, is that enough time?
Just to say it into the microphone, two and a half years?
Or December 2022? Okay.
It's hard to build a road in December, though, but yeah, two and a half years. That expectation would be that the gravel road is completed, and I, because I recognize you can't pay that whole thing in two years, because you don't have the revenue to do it right now.
Right, right.
But I want the loop completed. Oh, yeah.
All right, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Olivia, are you clear on that motion?
Just to clarify, so we're putting it in that December 2022 is the deadline for the gravel road to be completed?
So we had a motion and a second. Commissioner Karski?
I'm confused. I just want, for the gravel road or for a paved road?
I said the gravel, because they have to, they have to complete the paved road, but they haven't even completed the gravel road yet, and I think it's important for emergency vehicles to be able to have that gravel road access. It's got to be a drivable gravel road, and that just sets the bed for doing the, for doing it paved. I recognize until they've sold those six houses, they probably don't have the money to cover that loop paving, but that paving has to come in the future.
How much time does ordinance give them, Scott?
I believe two years. So two would be plenty.
Okay. And I bring it up because if you look in any residential area in Sioux Falls city limits, they pave the roads before they even start building homes. So, I mean, I don't know why we're waiting. I'm okay with it, but paving roads at the beginning is typically what I've seen. But I'm okay with following the ordinance as it's written, but yes, we do have to have the road built, so.
And I, can I just ask that it would be a date specific? I know you said December, but can we say December 31st?
Done.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just, you know, Dean raises a good point. I mean, are you comfortable? I guess we would find out in the vote, but are you comfortable with just giving him two years to complete the gravel road part, but then knowing that that paved road needs to come?
I'm very comfortable in doing that, having a little bit of experience in estimating cost on paved roads. Paved roads are extremely expensive, along with the utility work, obviously. I'm just going to give you, Scott, two minutes to think about that, but if, from my own personal experience of living in the southeast part of town, and now seeing friends of mine sell their horse stable on 57th and Southeastern, things do change, and people need to be flexible. And frankly, those are owner decisions, not government decisions, hopefully. So I appreciate the fact that, that we've given them some time, frankly, to do some revenue planning versus requiring them to spend money upfront.
Okay. That was a good discussion. I've lost track of whether we have a motion.
We, I made a motion.
All right, Commissioner Heiburger made a motion?
I seconded it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Benega? Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone. It's good discussion.
All right.
Takes us to item 12, which is to authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the 2020 Air Guard Agreement for an increase in funding of approximately $2,099,500. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
Thanks for being patient this morning.
Not a problem. Joe Bosson with the Sheriff's Office. We have before you this morning an amendment to the 2020 Air Guard Agreement to increase funding by $299,500. What this is, we go into an agreement with the Air National Guard every year to provide security services out there. When we do the agreement, we kind of are guessing our best guess for where we're going to be at for the budget and the personnel cost. This time, we are to the point where we can true up and get that a more accurate number before we end the contract here with them. So in order to do that, we would have to increase funding for $299,500, which is what the federal government would pay back to the county for security services out there.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Can we have one of these every week?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. It takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to approve a change in the contract holder on the improved purchase of the emergency management vehicle purchase from Lamb Chevrolet to Beck Chevrolet. Good morning.
Jason Gierman, Minnetonka County Emergency Management. I was able to, we had to do some changes because of the, obviously, the COVID situation. They weren't producing vehicles, so what they did is they extended the state bid process to, from 20 to 21, and I was able to locate a different vehicle with some different options at Beck Chevrolet instead of Lamb Chevrolet, due to the, due to the people that got the bid on that, which was Beck Chevrolet. It's a little bit more money, but it has some different options that would be helpful for what I use it for.
Questions?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Jason, before you leave.
That's why I didn't run off this time.
What else can you tell us about the current issues in the county as far as, are we looking at grass fires, flooding?
We had a fire meeting on Wednesday evening up in Baltic, and, or Colton, sorry, and there was no discussion about that, no, that wasn't brought up, and I really haven't seen much for grass fires. We've been getting enough rain lately, and everything seems to be pretty green, but we've been busy with other things, accidents, so forth.
Other questions for Jason, since he didn't run away? Commissioner Heiburger?
There was an accident yesterday on Highway 130, and I don't remember the crossroad. It's the one that goes to Crooks.
258?
Yes. And so I did notify the highway, or not the highway, I just come into the highway department that somebody stopped at the stop sign and then went through it, and it was, there's probably been four or five crashes there. I could be wrong, maybe three to four, since I've been commissioner, and I know we've continued to look at that intersection. I don't know if you were there yesterday.
I was.
No one has been killed yet. I hope no one is killed, but the person yesterday was taken by ambulance to the hospital. And in the past, I know there's been some, you know, some fairly serious, not life-threatening injuries at that intersection, and I talked to DJ briefly last night, and they're going to look at it again, I believe. So it seems to be a dangerous intersection for some reason, so.
There's continuing more and more traffic coming through there, so.
I'm sure.
Commissioner Beck?
Jason is getting extra duties at Wall Lake, it looks like. And I know that the state put a couple of rings out there, and I've been told that they've been used as toys by folks out there. You know, there's a rope on them, and, you know, it's not like being towed by a boat, but, you know, you could go out there on the ring and be towed back in by a good-sized guy. Anyway, it's, what do you think about the way things are going out there?
Well, you know, I don't think we want to just drag our feet on it right now, so I'm, I just was on the phone with the Penn here earlier about getting the sign done as quick as possible so we can get the life jackets out there. You know, the thing with, they're moving, they moved the buoys in this morning, but you got to realize they're on, they were screwed in before because the boats can drag them out. So now they're on blocks, so we're going to have issues with the boats dragging them back out. So Game Fish and Parks is going to have to come and move them back in. So it's temporary fix, but with the rules that the state has on their meeting rules and changes, you know, it has to be voted on and go through that commission also. So I think the help that they've given us and the leeway on this is, is going to be a big help because they need it being closer so people can actually touch. You know, you think of a swim buoy, you think, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to, I can go out to there and be safe. Well, with the south winds that come, it blows kids' toys out there. It, you know, it blows them out into the middle of the lake, and people try and swim after them. You know, unfortunately, people can't swim, so, you know, you shouldn't be out that deep anyway, but, you know, things happen, and it's not intentional, it's just an accident. But, you know, anything we can do to keep somebody from drowning out there, I think, is a good thing.
Yeah, just for.
Go ahead. I was just going to say that the life preservers that are going to be placed are not by a governmental entity. It's volunteers that are looking out for their brothers and sisters who are on the beach.
Right, yeah. I, I mean, I just would say that there's a lot of attention that's been focused on Wall Lake. There's been increased pressure on that area since the pools in Sioux Falls aren't open. But I really appreciate the work that Jason and Scott Anderson and Sheriff Milstead. And a special thanks to Representative Milstead, who was able to work with Game Fish and Parks to get permission to get the buoys moved in early so that they're, you know, in a, they're now in an area where, you know, it's more to five to six feet. So most people would be able to, to, you know, touch or at least bounce off the bottom at that area. And that they're, the buoys or the, the rescue rings that Commissioner Barth alluded to were used as flotation devices and have now been secured again and, and marked in nice bright red letters that they're for emergency use only. I was out there Friday night and they were properly stored where they were supposed to be. And that there is a group of citizens out at Wall Lake who have been soliciting life vests for donation that would be used. There's a, a model that has been used down in Yankton by the city of Yankton in their city park down by the river where they have these life vests for people to use. It's more by the boating ramp. It's over there, it's more for a boating purpose. But here it would be some signage that Jason's been working on with, to get prepared that would explain how to properly put on a life vest, you know? Like everything else, it's, we can provide that, but if it's not used properly, it's not going to be helpful. So we just really encourage people to get out and utilize that beautiful area at, at Wall Lake, but utilize it as safely as possible.
I, I just want to reiterate that, you know, just human nature, we're going to lose some of the life jackets. There, some of them are going to get stolen because that happens in Yankton and the other places. So we are going to require some, you know, maybe public help, business help for donations to, to purchase the life jackets to make sure that we have enough out there and that, and that when, when one gets maybe wrecked or a buckle is broke, we'll have to take it out of service. And I don't see it being a huge burden on my part with the help of Scott's team. And, and we can get this done pretty easily, I think, so.
All right. Any, any questions? More questions for Jason? Now you get to escape, so.
Oh, no COVID.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. So that takes us, I've got so many scribbles on my agenda. That now takes us to item 14, which is a brief on the fiscal year 2021 provisional budget. Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Minnehaw County Commission Office. Next week, you will approve or adopt the provisional budget for fiscal year 2021. And I'll just go through a few highlights, especially for the people who are listening and have not sat through the budget meetings as you all have. One, there is no additional opt-out dollars that are being utilized. You worked very hard to make sure that would happen this year. The general fund cash applied is at 5.15 million, very much within an area of what you've had in the past for that number. The 114,977,000 and $21 includes $20 million in capital projects for replacement and renovation of county facilities. You have bond debt that is expiring in 2020, allowing for new bonds to be issued without incurring any tax increases to the taxpayer. Health insurance, 15% increase, matrix adjustment of 2%. You have moved two positions, you've approved two positions to move from grant-funded positions into the general funded. And two new positions were approved, both within public safety, a paralegal within the state's attorney and a correctional systems operator within the jail. So July 28th is the adoption of the provisional hearing. The next budget hearing will be held on September 8th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Commissioner Karski.
I recall a, an additional paralegal within the public defender's office. Was that not the case? Because they had requested attorneys am paralegal. And I thought we had approved a paralegal for the public defender.
There was a reclassification of a paralegal to a supervisor.
Yep, but I thought we approved a paralegal within the public defender's office.
I'd have to look at my notes. We'll have to go back.
We'll have to go back. I thought it was a reclassification as well, but.
Because we were, yeah, going from four paralegals to four paralegals plus a supervisor is the way I recall it. I'd like, yeah.
But before our hearing next week, if we could just clarify that and if you could send an email out to the commissioners, that would be helpful. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the budget? All right, well, this was just a briefing. Next week is the vote, so we appreciate you bringing that information forward. Okay, that takes us to item 15, which is to consider a resolution to accept the CARES Act reimbursement grant funds. Carol.
Thank you. Congress passed the Coronavirus and Relief and Economic Security Act, which we know as CARES, to provide resources to help governments, businesses, and individuals respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. In South Dakota, South Dakota was provided money for this, and $200 million of that has been set aside to go down to cities and counties, with Minnehaw County eligible for up to 12.78 million, 12.78 million for reimbursable expenses. Attached are two documents for you. One is the FAQ and the reimbursement workflow documents that hopefully give you a little bit more background. The first step for the commission is to improve, is to approve the resolution, which authorizes the chairperson to execute the reimbursement agreement. The reimbursement is for necessary expenditures incurred due to COVID-19 and are expended between March 1 and December 30 of 2020. And the title of the resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of contractual documents with the state of South Dakota for the receipt of CARES Act funds to address the COVID-19 public health crisis.
Anytime we authorize an execution, it should be taken seriously. I'm sorry.
It's a good and appropriate comment.
That only affects the chairperson anyway.
Any comments or questions for Carol? This is obviously something that we have talked about, that there's been a fair bit of work done by Carol and Ken Abenson in the state's attorney's office. As we've looked at this resolution and the contract, most of the work is yet to be done. As in anything, it's where the rubber meets the road when we actually get into the portal and start putting in the information for reimbursement.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Hi, Burger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Yeah.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Bender.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item 16, which is consider a motion to declare the 2008 Ford Explorer Commission Office asset 1124 as surplus and authorize title transfer to the Minnehaw County Human Services Department.
Thank you, Chairman Bender. The county, as you're aware of, through the commission offices, had two vehicles. I believe they're both 2008s is what they are. One's blue and one's brown, so that's how we affectionately know them as, do you get the blue or the brown vehicle? They're Ford Explorers. And one of them is almost consistently used by human services. During the budget hearings, we had the conversation about assigning them one of the vehicles. And at some point next year, probably the commission will pick up another vehicle to replace that one. As we went through this, we recognized that the human services has used it 84.5% of the time and has added 52% of the miles, I believe that, since the first of the year. So our decision was to go ahead, make the repairs on it that needed to be done and turn it over at this point and let them continue to utilize the vehicle as they have, not involving our office anymore. They were excited.
You, I think. All right, any comments?
Just as a comment, that they use this vehicle for their alliance program when they're transporting people or, or they're getting out of jail. And there, there's a lot of different reasons, but they use it a lot for the programs that we are helping people who are trying to get back on their feet again, so.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth. Bennigan.
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Hi.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 17, which is a brief on proposed legislative resolutions. Craig Dewey, good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Even though it's the summer, legislative session next year is quickly approaching. And as has been the practice the last few years, Minnehaw County has collaborated with the city of Sioux Falls and surrounding municipalities to adopt a joint legislative platform. That has resonated well with legislators as the collaboration has been communicated to them. The legislators have appreciated knowing that the local area has vetted ideas prior to being approached to support specific legislation in peer. This year, Commissioners Heiburger and Commissioner Bender both participated in these meetings. And there were three meetings over the course of June and July. And two additional resolutions are being added to the list of items that have previously been approved. The first one, and these will require two separate motions because these are two different resolutions, so if we could take them one at a time, please. The first resolution is to provide adequate state funding to reconstruct a portion of Slip Up Creek Road from 476th Avenue to the State Veterans Cemetery. And as you know, the State Veterans Cemetery will be opening next year in the spring. And right now, there's a section of road that is unpaved. And with the high level of traffic that would be coming to the cemetery, it's imperative that people have a positive experience with that. Currently, it is a township road, and the township does not have revenue to be able to pave that road. And so this resolution would simply urge the state to provide adequate funding to construct the portion of the road. So the resolution does not attempt to commit any county funds at this point. No solution has been brought forward as far as who will pay for what. But again, the local governments want to make sure that since people from across the state will be benefiting from this and the surrounding areas, that, that road would be constructed. Would be happy to answer any questions about that resolution or in general, the process of determining these priorities.
Commissioner Karski.
I would say that it's more than just a nice thing to do. It's actually part of the requirement when that money was given by the federal government to the state to construct the cemetery that that road be paved. And it has to be done, and the township can't do it. Andy Zakers, people that live out there, they paid for part of the pavement of that road just to keep the dust down many years ago. This road needs to be paved, and it's been a work in progress. But who's going to own it? Who's going to pay for it? So I'm glad to see that we're including it here, just so that we can bring it to the level that it needs to be done to, to make it a paved road.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Maybe you said this, Craig, and it went right over my head, but when we, when we approve each one of these or don't approve, it goes from here and then it will go to the state association. So Minnehaw County could approve this and the state association could say no. If the state association approves it, then you get the state association's backing on that particular bill. If someone takes it forward, it goes into their bylaws, resolutions, not their bylaws, their resolutions area. And so just, just knowing that this is one step, as we vote for it, it would, it would vote for us to approve it locally. But you're also approving it to go to the state association to be discussed by the board of directors.
Commissioner Heiburger, you raise an important point. So as part of the steps that you outlined, all of these local governmental entities would consider the resolutions, approve them, and the resolution would go to their appropriate state association for consideration to support on a statewide level.
Any other thoughts or comments? Commissioner Bennigan.
Just a quick question. If, for whatever reason, the state denies one of these two, we still have the ability to do it on our own, correct?
If the state association.
As a county?
Correct. The county could choose to move forward with whatever legislative priorities you, five commissioners, would approve.
Okay.
So the statement in these resolutions is more about, here's what the local area supports.
Right.
So we certainly recognize that it is possible with the next resolution that could come up that the statewide association may not. But again, local governments are trying to send a united message together.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, I guess on the second one, I recognize that it, you know, it could help the whole area. But I, I don't necessarily like it when we're spending our political capital to help only municipalities to get income for specific infrastructure projects. I think that too often, counties are left along the roadside as cities move forward with swimming pools and movie stars.
Any other?
Catch each other's backs.
And when we get to the point where we're discussing the second resolution, I'll certainly go into more details about what the implications of that would be.
Okay. So are there any, is there anyone who is, I'm not hearing any opposition to the first proposal, so.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Hi.
Karski. Bender.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So now we'll move on to the second one.
Right. The second resolution is supporting legislation allowing electors of a municipality to consider a one-cent temporary municipal sales tax increase for specific infrastructure projects. And this was discussed across the group. And in previous years, I believe last year, there was a resolution that is still being supported by municipalities in terms of supporting counties in enacting a local option, a bed, board, or booze tax. And so that one, while it didn't directly apply to the municipalities, given that these were a collaborative effort in sending a united message, the municipalities supported that, even though it wouldn't necessarily directly benefit them. They understand the impact that bed, board, or booze revenue could have for county public safety expenses in particular. And so this resolution, supporting the temporary one-cent sales tax, would fall along a similar line of the counties' recognized municipalities' needs as well. And so since this is a specific resolution that really only applies to municipalities, I can't comment on what likelihood. It would be that the state association would be willing to support that. Irrespective of that, the agreement in the consensus amongst these local governmental entities was that we're supporting a similar set of priorities to help send a message of collaboration. Would be happy to answer any questions about this resolution.
So Commissioner Barth already gave us two cents. Anybody else have any comments about this? Commissioner Bennigan.
I'll give a penny, since Jeff is twice as much expense. I really feel strongly that the infrastructure systems of the city expand to create property tax growth with expansion and help us, since our number one income source for counties is property tax. So without infrastructure support, even at the city level, the counties do benefit eventually with that growth. So we may be scratching their back, but frankly, we need to do that because our sources of revenue don't change unless we have growth. Maybe that's worth two cents, I don't know.
Is that a motion? Let me throw a nickel on it here.
Okay.
You know, every county isn't like our county. Elizabeth May, former candidate for Congress, when she was in the legislature, had a bill to allow counties to have a vote to increase sales tax. Because representing Jackson County, they've got zero growth. And yet, at the same time, they have increasing costs for criminal justice and law enforcement. And it went down. And so this could be good for us, good for Minnehaw County. But what about Jones County, Hocken County, these, these other places? I, I think I'm okay with us supporting it, but we've got to make it clear that we're helping our, our municipalities, but not everyone.
And ultimately, the South Dakota Association and the counties will need to consider that. Commissioner Karski.
Going back to time that I worked with municipal league through the city, there's a lot of small towns that just don't have the revenue they need to, it might be put in a sewer line or whether it be storm sewer or sanitary sewer. And this allows the people, the taxpayers of that municipality, the ability to decide if they want to have that tax on themselves to pay for this specific project. So, I mean, this is very beneficial to small communities to have this type of language or ordinance available to them. And even more so the small ones than the big ones.
All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I would make a motion to approve item two.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Craig.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 18, which are liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner Heiburger, I'll start with you. We'll go down the row.
I have two. One, yesterday was the National Association of County Commissioners National Convention, where we elected a new president and subsequent following positions down the road. Normally, we would have traveled to, this year, we were going to go to Florida. There's a lot of different educational, it would have been awfully hot. I was happy to be sitting home on my porch, listening to the meeting. But we had about a two-hour meeting just discussing businesses. They did change the bylaws a little bit to include that we could now do virtual meetings. Never would have thought that we'd have been doing virtual meetings for a national convention, but it was a good meeting. It was open to all counties this year. So we actually could have had 66 votes coming out of South Dakota. We only had 12. You just had to sign up. Each county was allowed certain votes, and we only got 12 people to participate, but at least we had 12. So that was a good start as we continue. NACO has been very important to Minnehaw County. It's connected us with some of the grants that we've gotten and some of the help that we've gotten. Our stepping-up program through, the human services comes out of NACO and a lot of really important connections that we've made. And then the other one I wanted to talk about was last year, in 2019, we formed the Sioux Empire Leadership Council called SELC. And it was a group to promote collaboration, identify common goals and priorities, and implement stress. identify common goals and priorities, and implement strategies between the cities, the counties, the states, education and, and community stakeholders. And we will be having an event July 30th called the Community Table Talk on Diversity. This is a project we started last fall, so nothing to do with what just has been happening nationally. But it's like, the Community Table Talk is a community-wide conversation, but in smaller groups. Each table will have a facilitator, the tables will have, will have discussions, and they are committed to addressing multi-facets of the human diversity, particularly topics on our community that have, that result from prejudice and discrimination. And it's just an opportunity to identify leaders in our community, networking, fostering our community through listening, learning, and definitive action. This is sponsored by, or funded by, the MacArthur Grant, another opportunity we got through NACO and the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, and also Think 3D and Pinnacle Productions. I'm going to invite you to the virtual. There are two different platforms, there will be an in-person platform, which will be very small because of the COVID, definitely had the downsides from where we had started, and that, they're going to be focusing on a diverse population for the in-person gathering, but there is also a virtual link, and I will send you down each an invitation for that if you want to look at that and see if that will work for your schedule to get in and see what we're doing. This collaboration is between Lincoln County, Minnehaha County, the city of Sioux Falls, the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, the Second Circuit, and the UJS, and the community at large, the school districts, the hospitals, both of here and Sanford sit on this board. And so, it's a wide neck, wide network of collaboration, and like I said, we've been working on this project for a while, and it's finally going to come to our first step, so that's my update on that.
Chair, question for-
Mr. Barth.
Commissioner Hiberger. So Cindy, on the NACO election, the, the candidate for, second candidate withdrew, so was there only one candidate for president?
There was only one candidate for president, and I can't think of her name, but the one that withdrew actually lost her primary election-
Yeah.
-in Oklahoma, so.
And it was a pretty small vote, it was like, you know, 190 to 88 or something. Anyway, of course, I got to see them when we were in Washington DC for the legislative conference.
Her last name is Winford. I don't remember what her first name is.
Was it Bobbitt or Bob?
That's who lost, but the, the new president is Mrs., Ms., Ms. Winford.
Winfrey, yeah. Well, thank you for that, and-
Anything else on that? Thank you for this invitation. That looks really fascinating. Great, great opportunity.
Yeah, it is.
Commissioner Barth.
We had a meeting of the CCOG E-Board last week, and it was all about the COVID funding through the federal government, and Lynn Keller Forbes and her staff are working hard on this, and so, more to come, I guess.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski.
Thank you. Last legislative session, Deb Sohl, Senator, was able to obtain $200,000 in one-time funding for LINK, or what we've been referring to as a community, community triage center, so just remember LINK. And of course, with everything that had been going on in the economy and such, a lot of those one-time funds were kind of taken off the table, and happy to report that the state was able to make all the budgets that we need to, so that $200,000 is being provided, and that money is going to be used for the renovation of the city's annex building to prepare it for LINK. So, that just came about here in the last couple of days.
Great news. Thank you. All right, are there any other liaison reports? I just would like to say that Commissioner Karski and I attended the Zoom department head meeting last Tuesday afternoon, which I really appreciate all the department heads participating in that, and to Carol for coordinating that, but it's a great opportunity to hear from them and to hear what's going on in the various departments, and we're going to try to give an opportunity for the commissioners to rotate through, and especially now, you know, there were some good things that we learned over the last few months, and Zoom works really well for those department head meetings and therefore works well for commissioners to join as well, so. All right, that takes us to nineteen, new business? Is there any new business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
First of all, let me say that I didn't realize that there was a Zoom opportunity for the department head meetings. That sounds like a lot of fun. At the same time, I don't want to exceed the number of commissioners legally present.
We're gonna plan to take turns, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the two, two of us were on last time, and we're gonna try to rotate through commissioners.
So the next thing I'm gonna say is, it, it might sound a little political, but I'm really concerned about education this year, and I think that schools, state, federal government, we have to spend whatever it takes to get kids back in school, and it doesn't have to be present actually in the room, but, you know, we think education is expensive, but consider how expensive ignorance is. And I would also say that this is the largest generation of children that this country has ever had. Can we afford them to be uneducated? We've got enough uneducated people, and so, I don't care what we can do, what the school board can do, what the state can do, let's get it done.
Yeah. I would say that I very much appreciate all the school boards and the administrators and all the teachers, all the folks that are working really hard to put together plans for school to start at, say, we think we have complicated problems, that is a complicated issue with, you know, an onion with many, many layers, as you get through one, you find another, but I do appreciate all the work that they're doing. All right, anything else on new business? Old business? Anything for old business?
Move to go into recess.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll take about a seven-minute break, and then we'll return. Thank you.